We'll call to order the Board of Franklin County Commissioners' meeting for Wednesday, June 14th.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Renaud?
Present.
Chair Weymeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
If you would please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance or remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, I want to say thank you to the Commissioners for the lovely lunch last week. It was good to see you guys working out there at the grill, so it was lovely. Thanks a lot. That's prayer. Lord, we thank you for this beautiful morning in Franklin County. Thank you for the rain we had last night, beautiful sunset last night. We live in a great place and we appreciate all that you give us and for those who serve us. Thank you for our Commissioners, for those from the county who keep things up and keep things going. We appreciate the work that they do and we are thankful. Lord, we pray to be with the folks of our county, watch over them, be with those, Lord, who are maybe hurting right now through loss of loved ones or something else. Many people had some things going on with a hailstorm that we recently had, just be with them as they work through all the paperwork and all that to get things fixed. Lord, be with our families and our friends and help us to be lifters for them and encouragers for those around us. Lord, help us take advantage of everything that our county offers and pray for one another, pray for our country. We pray for our first responders, for our EMS, for our fire and for police and sheriff and our dispatchers and all the folks who serve us so well. Lord, thank you again for the day. Help us to use it wisely and watch over us the rest of this week. We ask in Christ's name. Amen. Thank you. All right. Today is a day of celebration and recognition. Under Correspondence and Organizational Business, we have two retirements today. And I believe we have some plaques as a small token of our appreciation and recognition for the years of service. We'll present those and then we'll take some time and have some cake and punch and celebrate the retirement of these two fine people. Let's all go down and... All right. First up is James Scholes, a heavy equipment operator two. They were celebrating his 34 years of service. We have a plaque to present. Thank you. I believe there's a lot of pictures. Do you want to stand right here with all of us?
Yeah.
Probably be a better picture if you didn't. Next, we have Guy Ellis. Guy is a heavy equipment operator one, and we're celebrating his nine years of service. All right, you guys.
Thank you. You can have a chance to make a speech if you want.
No, I can't.
Cake and punch time, so keep some sessions at the back. All right, let's get back to our meeting. Do you have anything else for Correspondence and Organizational Business? All right. Do we have a public comment?
Yes, we do. Gene Hurt.
All right, Gene.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gene Hurt, 107 Jefferson Street in Pomona, Kansas. Today, I'm going to read some stuff that happened at the city council meeting at Pomona on June the 5th. And it's, you know, I know that Roy's been on vacation, and so I think it's imperative to bring this up. And so, B&amp;G Consultants, who's redoing the engineering issue for the sewer project, was there again, gave an update. Instead of a cost of $4.31 million, it is now $4.33 million. The requirement meetings have been going on now, the ones that have been. They are, they gave a report on their dates, and they expect that this project, again, still will be done by the year 2020 and early, but they've extended extra workdays for them if they have problems with the weather, clear until September the 1st of that year. Now, there will be hearings, there will be this, but there'll be a number of them during this year. Hopefully, the people will be able to hear what's going to take place in town, and we're all anxious to see. Now, the one concern I have about this issue and going on is the sewer ponds. I have for some time, and the main initial report from B&amp;G, the sludge in all three of those sewer ponds is keeping it from functioning properly by quite a bit of percentage. And so, they've got to do, I think they've got to clean those sewer ponds out before they start anything at all. But I don't know what they're going to do for sure yet. It hasn't been brought out. Okay. The next thing that was brought up at that meeting was, they had Alan Radcliffe there and the Fire Department on these new radios that they're going to have to have, hopefully with the Sheriff Department. And they're going to be very expensive, anywhere from $4,000 up to $12,000. I don't know for sure whether they're going to be, how many they're going to buy, or what they're going to do, because the cost is staggering, and how many radios they would want. So, maybe the Sheriff will comment on that today. Okay. And then they brought up finally the sheets on the streets. As you know, they did the streets last year. And clear up till the 1st of this year. I told them about the problems with the streets. They wouldn't listen. Okay? Now, warranty period, from what I got from open records request, states that they've got to notify the contractor in advance to take care of these potholes. Now, you know, these potholes have developed because of the contractor not taking care of the potholes before they did the streets. So, they're back. All of them are back. You ought to have seen it this morning when the rain...
Down to one minute.
Uh-huh. I thought he was going to do that, looking at the clock. Okay. So, you could see the potholes everywhere this morning. Some of them are deep and they need repaired. And I hope that this warranty, warranty that I got from open records is taking care of it, well, for them. But I really wondered, because if they don't take care of the potholes, then it can go up for another year or try to get them fixed in town. That about takes care of the meeting. Thank you.
All right.
That's it.
That's it. Our consent agenda today, it include approving minutes for our meeting on May 31st and our study session on June 12th, as well as tax change orders in the amount of negative $25,437.48. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Our first item of business is to consider a engineering proposal for a bridge.
Good morning, Commissioners. Bridge 17-11.8 is a 60-foot steel truss and a 16.2 steel beam structure which is fracture critical. It is the department's intent to apply for the 2019 local off-system bridge program. We've had some success with that, having done the West Wilson Bridge and the Bridge on Jackson. And having field check plans would be a benefit. Current estimated replacement cost is $480,000, and the local share would be $96,000. The request is a motion to approve executing a proposal for Bridge 17-11.8 with CFSS engineers in the amount of $21,000.
What road is that on?
Pond Aegis west of Eisenhower. It's a one-lane pony truss with 16.2-foot steel beams on one end, over Eight Mile Creek, I believe.
Is it our lowest sufficiency rating bridge, or?
It's at 3/10 of a percent.
3/10, it's about as low as you... All right. Any questions for Jim?
Plus being fracture critical, we have to inspect it annually.
Is there a motion to approve the proposal?
I'll make a motion. We approve the proposal for Bridge 17-11.8 in the amount of $21,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jim. Fourth item of business, consider for approval the third amended bylaws in interlocal agreement for membership of K-Camp, the county's insurance carrier.
K-Camp will occasionally amend their bylaws, and when they do, they ask that the governing bodies of their entities approve those amendments. They have included, for your convenience, a memorandum that details the specific changes. Frankly, even if we wanted to object, I mean, if we want to remain with K-Camp, there's, I mean, this is their decision, but having said that, there's nothing here at all that piques my interest. It's really just a procedural...
Majority decision, I guess, to better understand. For anyone else, K-Camp is more or less a cooperative among counties. We were one of the original members, so I guess this is why we're being asked to approve our insurance carrier's bylaw.
Yeah.
Maybe for better understanding?
Yep, absolutely.
All right. Well, our legal counsel has reviewed it. Is there any questions, comments, or would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the amendment of the bylaws, the interlocal agreement with K-Camp.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Renaud?
Yes.
Commissioner Oglesby?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Weymeyer?
Yes. That brings us to staff reports.
Yes, I just have a couple of things. As you all are well aware, last week, we had our employee appreciation luncheon, and certainly, I know the staff and the employees appreciated the board coming out and spending their time cooking. What maybe wasn't apparent was the amount of work that went into getting all of that put together. And we had several staff members, a lot of our maintenance department worked very hard on doing that. And Joy, and I know Joy loves attention, but she really quarterbacked all of it and did an excellent job. So, I did want to bring that up, because I know she put a lot of work into that, and I got so many compliments on how well that turned out. So, very pleased with that. On Saturday, and I saw Commissioner Oglesby there, the county had a, and I might butcher the title, but basically a safety awareness day whereby a lot of rural fire departments, the city fire department, EMS, sheriff's department, all brought vehicles and displays out to the Orshelins parking lot. That's the second time I've went since I've been here. I don't know how far back it dates, but that's always kind of a neat event, and I felt like they had, when I was there, they had a pretty good turnout. Certainly, something that, I had my kids with me and was very popular with them, I think, you know, kids crawling around on the trucks, and they had divers there and a little pool. It was just, it was a neat event, so. And then, obviously, you all know, at 10 o'clock today, we're getting into the meat of our budget hearings, so obviously, the public's welcome to attend those should they choose, and we'll plan on getting on at then, so.
All right. Sheriff?
To kind of touch on what Mr. Hurt had brought up about that Pomona meeting, on the radio presentation, that was just, it was the preliminary informational meeting, and there will be, there will be two more of those today that are, that will be more formal. And I believe the mayor from Pomona will be attending that one, the afternoon meeting on that, on that radio system today. And that is something that Emergency Management has been talking with us for quite a while on, and Administrator's been involved in that as well. So, I mean, it's just, that discussion did happen as part of an ongoing process, just to provide information to everyone that is, that could potentially be affected by the project. On Monday, Administrator and I presented the 911 budget to the Ottawa City Commission. That will be the same budget presentation that will, you'll be hearing from me at 10 o'clock today. So, but I just wanted you to know that as part of that interlocal agreement, they do call upon me periodically to go present anything that has to do budget-wise, and we're required to, throughout the budget process as well, and just the timing of the way everything worked out. That actually happened prior to us having our meeting. They are aware that it was just a proposed budget, that nothing's been approved, and that I was going to be sitting down with all of you this week. So, they were aware of that. And then, as has been brought up, this is the time of year for fairs and events and all kinds of activities, and we are staying very busy with those. We've been at the duck race, and we've had Jayhawk-a-days, and we had the safety fair, and we've had a couple other things, and we've, they have been well attended by the community, and the community seems to really appreciate all their public service organizations going out and helping them and serving them in that capacity. So, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, I will see you at 10.
All right.
Then we'll have questions, right?
Hey, Cole, if I could piggyback on his comment on the radios, and the board's been given a pretty thorough update on where that process is at. We are having meetings today. The purpose of those meetings, they are informational, but we've also asked each of our subscribers to come prepared with the amount of radios that they would ideally like to purchase, the grade of those radios, and Tom and Alan, and they did a fantastic job with this, but they put a spreadsheet together that we sent all of the subscribers, so we'll have it on a uniform document that we can all review. As part of that document, I included language and have told Alan over and over that the Board of Commissioners ultimately reserves the right to basically do with this project as you please. Once we have a rough number on the radios, Alan and I will put this on a study session, and I would look to have a pretty comprehensive discussion about all of this. But certainly, everyone is aware that the Board reserves the right to finance, basically, at whatever level you choose. So, this is something I've had my hands all over, and certainly, won't ask the Board to make any decisions on it until you are very well educated on what all of this entails.
Lot of unknowns at this point.
There is a lot of unknowns.
Both the rate and the amount.
That's right.
Paul, would you like to share some information about how the facilities fared the hailstorm?
I'm sorry, Commissioner. Sorry my voice is kind of gone. Overall, we did pretty good. I was surprised when I got out and inspected the roofs in the buildings. With the nine facilities, we just had two that really received much damage at all. The roof at the old courthouse and the roof on the visitor center are very good candidates for replacement from the storm. I'm waiting back for the rest of the information from the Jesse from K-Camp, from the adjuster, to get the final say-so on those. We have the rooftop units here, it was the only other thing that really received much damage, and they received a radical amount of damage. So, it's anywhere from replacement of the condensers to complete replacement, and Jesse hasn't gotten back with me on that information yet, but he's looking at both of those avenues. I do have one quote on that, but I don't have all of them back yet, so I was waiting until I got all of them back to get you guys that information. But overall, we fared really well. I was surprised, and women at the courthouse were shutting shades and making sure everything was closed. They were afraid the windows might get broke. But overall, we did real well.
Do you want to share about the roof on this building and how well it performed?
Yeah, it did really well. They come down and inspected it. We didn't have any damage on it whatsoever. What we did put on was rated from up to golf ball and baseball-sized hail anyway, rated to withstand that for a certain amount of time. So, we didn't have a lot of that, so it held up real good. The only damage visible here on the roof-wise was just on the metal cap around the edges, and that's expected, and it was just small dents, nothing that they're really concerned about. So, the rest of them fared about the same, as far as the new roofs did real well, and the other roofs held up pretty good. So, any questions?
Well, thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Jim, what's Public Works up to?
The Chip Seal Project started last Tuesday on the 6th. They shut down temporarily so they could haul in more cover material. We expect them back in the near future. We replaced a deck on a bridge on Thomas west of Iowa.
Janet? Commissioners' comments, Board reports.
Let me start. It's been a while, so on June the 6th, I attended the RC&amp;D meeting, and the main thing that, at that meeting, was Martin Bates, the Executive Director of Douglas County Extension, was there and talked with us a little bit about what Douglas County is doing with their farms and growing vegetables and their different types of farms it's raising, organic beef and all that kind of stuff. And one thing, I got several pamphlets, but one thing that's pretty interesting, they have this tour on October the 1st and 2nd, and you can visit, there'll be 32 local farms that'll be on this. There's wineries, there's vegetable farms, livestock, and it's not all just Douglas County, it's in the surrounding area. And I have his card and anything, if you want more information on that, or you can look through this brochure if you want to. And you can pick the farms you want to go to that day. Some of them are having breakfast there with some of their eggs and stuff that they've raised, and it looks like a pretty good time, a good chance to go out and visit some different places if you're interested in that. And then they talked about repairing the RC&amp;D truck, their trip to Ellsworth and the bikes. Also got an update on the partnership grant that Project 17 is working on, trying to get for the different organizations in Project 17. And that was the main thing on that meeting. Then last night, I attended the barbecue at the ambulance for the first responders, and then when it was over, I went to Richmond to their city council meeting, and they've had a vacant seat for a long time on their council, and they appointed a gentleman to fill that seat until the election. And they changed their mowing service to a company here in Ottawa, and they have a tractor that needs worked on, they talked about fixing it, and they also okayed buying a trailer to haul their mower and different things on. And that was pretty much the extent of that meeting. That's the extent of my stuff.
Randy?
I attended the Rand Tool City Council meeting a week ago, last Monday. They discussed lots and homes that had grass that was growing and not being tended to, and they discussed their water situation and loss of water through different leaks or malfunctioning pumps. Also discussed their upcoming July the 4th celebration, which will be on Saturday, June the 24th. A meal they'll have, they're going to do a potluck dinner and fireworks. They also talked about playground equipment for their park. That's it. I spent the last two days out of state trying to find a location for my father, so I missed a couple other meetings. But I would like to piggyback on what Derek said about the appreciation dinner and the work and stuff. It's, you know, I spent 30-some years as Administrator, and I can tell you, it's just like the North Pole. The elves do all the work, and the fat man in the suit gets all the credit. And it's nice to share that credit with those people who do the work, and I certainly wouldn't want that to happen in our case again, that you let those people know that we're showing appreciation for them, and yet they have to do a lot of the work to do it. But it was nice. It was very nice and very well done, and I certainly want those people to know that we appreciate that work.
I attended the Chamber of Commerce Board meeting yesterday morning. They had a number of new videos that are going to be released, and the finalizing of those, the editing of those, that really promote the community very well. There'll be additional ones that different businesses may have purchased that will piggyback on the back of those, and those will be up on the website as well. There was a lot of discussion from FTC...
And I have his card and anything if you want more information on that, or you can look through this brochure if you want to. And you can pick the farms you want to go to that day. Some of them are having breakfast there with some of their eggs and stuff that they've raised and it looks like a pretty good time and a good chance to go out and visit some different places if you're interested in that. And then they talked about repairing the RCND truck, their trip to Ellsworth and, and the bikes. Also got an update on the partnership grant that Project 17 is working on, trying to get for, for the different organizations in Project 17. And that was the main thing on that meeting. Then last night, I attended the barbecue at the ambulance for the first responders and then when it was over, I went to Richmond to their city council meeting and they've had a vacant seat for a long time on their council and they appointed a gentleman to, to fill that seat until the election. And they changed their mowing service to a company here in Ottawa and they have a tractor that needs worked on, they talked about fixing it and they also okayed buying a trailer to haul their, their mower and different things on and that was pretty much the extent of that meeting. It's the extent of my stuff.
Randy?
I attended the Rand Tool City Council meeting a week ago last Monday. They discussed lots and homes that had grass that was growing and not being tended to and they discussed their water situation and loss of water through different leaks or malfunctioning pumps. Also discussed their upcoming July the 4th celebration, which will be on Saturday, June the 24th. A meal they'll have, they're going to do a potluck dinner and fireworks. They also talked about playground equipment for their park. That's it. I spent the last two days out of state trying to find a location for my father, so I missed a couple of other meetings. But I would like to piggyback on what Derek said about the, the appreciation dinner and the work and stuff. It's, you know, I spent 30-some years as administrator and I can tell you, it's just like the North Pole, the elves do all the work and the fat man in the suit gets all the credit. And it's nice to share that credit with those people who, who do the work and, and I certainly wouldn't want that to happen in our case again, that you let those people know that we're showing appreciation for them and yet they have to do a lot of the work to do it, but it, it was nice, it was very nice and very well done and I certainly want those people to know that we appreciate that work.
I, I attended the Chamber of Commerce board meeting yesterday morning. They had a number of new videos that are going to be released and the finalizing of those, the editing of those that really promote the community very well. There'll be additional ones that, that different businesses may have purchased that will piggyback on the back of those and those will be up on the website as well. There was a lot of discussion from FTC, FCDC about their website and how it's going to be updated very soon and then, not to steal anybody's thunder or anything, but that there may be a groundbreaking that's going to take place on the, the 29th at Proximity Park and, and a new sign that'll go up and, and hopefully give a little bit better picture and, and kind of an artist rendition, I think, of what that park may look like as people come by, so. Those are all positive things and there's some, a lot of discussion from our partner at USD 290 as well, their progress to construction, so a lot of good things happening in the county.
Roy?
I went to the honored flight return at a Walmart about a week or so ago and it's really, really neat to see those old, old guys, especially World War II veterans, there are not too many of them left, but see those guys get a chance to go to Washington DC and see the, all the monuments and, and tributes out there at Washington DC. Central Heights has sponsored it and each, each one of the veterans has a student chaperone that helps, helps get them around, so it's a pretty neat, pretty neat deal and appreciates what Central Heights does to organize those trips. Just a little update, Richard Jackson, CEO of ECAN, he had bypass surgery about a week ago and last time I heard that he was doing well. I went to the education technology wing at a high school, groundbreaking and they're making a lot of progress out there at high school. It's going to be like a brand-new high school when they get through and, and they're having the ribbon cutting out at Sunflower Elementary School on the 24th, so that'll be coming up. And I mentioned today is Flag Day and it's kind of tradition, Flag Day, you, if you need to retire a flag, it's time to get a new flag and if you want to retire a flag, the VFW will take them or Boy Scouts will take them and retire them properly. That's all I have.
Do you think anything to add from the FCDC meeting? Nothing outstanding, I think so?
Nope, no.
All right. So, budget meeting starts at 10. We'll have a little lull in between now and then. If there's nothing else, last for a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? We adjourned. So, we're back here at 10.